At this time, we will call our meeting to order. Please let us stand for our invocation and our pledge allegiance. To the great Creator, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for another opportunity to serve. We ask that you come within this meeting to lead and guide our hearts and our minds as we do the wilderness service of your people. So we welcome you into this meeting today to please have your way, that all that we do will be done for the betterment, not only for the citizens of Florence, but all that we call neighbors and friends. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council, I call your attention to our agenda. First item we have is approval of minutes, minutes from January 26th through the 27th, 2023, work retreat in February 13th, 2023, our regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next we have is our spring 2023 City University graduation. At this time, we will recognize that there's no objection. Ms. Amanda Pope.
Good afternoon, my mayor, members of council. Recognizing city council's desire for transparency and strong communication with our residents, city staff looks for creative ways to enhance civic engagement. Staff discussed the idea of a Civics 101 or City 101 program, and then we introduced that idea at our City Council Marketing and Public Relations Committee meeting. We also took that opportunity to look at other communities in the state and the successes they were having with similar programs. On January 30th, we held the first session of City University, it's been shortened to City U, where our participants were introduced to the city's leadership team and heard presentations from the city manager's office, the human resources department, and finance department. Over the next five weeks, participants have had opportunity to visit different city facilities and hear presentations from recreation, athletics and sports tourism, fire, police, utilities, economic development, public works, and thanks to our local PD Regional Transportation Authority, and Adon's here today, thank you so much. We were able to participate in a city bus tour guided by city staff from our Planning, Research and Development and Community Services Departments. City University is an educational opportunity for local citizens who are interested in learning more about city operations. The program provides a behind-the-scenes look at daily operations in the city of Florence. Participants are able to learn details of city operations and talk one-on-one with our department heads about the services we provide. We couldn't have asked for a better group for the kickoff of this new city initiative. It was a pleasure to interact and get to know this group of participants and see their enthusiasm and interest in knowing more about city government and its operations. We have 14 participants that are here today, and we'd like to recognize them for completing their first City University class, and Mayor Irvin is going to present these certificates. If you would please, when you come up, if you'll stay after the mayor presents your certificate after your name's called, and we're going to get a great picture. Our first graduate of City U is Michelle Barr. Dani Brackton. Kimberly Brockington. Ursula Gregg.
Yes, yes.
It's not stuck to one or the other ones, is it? It is right here, Mayor.
All right. Congratulations.
Yolanda Holmes-Eckles. Regina Huff. August Langley. Paula Lance. Deborah Moses. Scott Murphy. Sheila Rivers. Nathaniel Raul. Janet Sommons. And Missy Orland. I might have to squeeze in.
And congratulations to all the participants and also to Ms. Pope and to all the staff. Congratulations and thank you for all that y'all have done to bring this program together to help the citizens of Florence have more information and knowledge about their city. At this time, we will proceed to our appearances before council, and please note that each person who gives notice to speak may be limited to a five-minute presentation, and is that a discretion of residing office, sir? The City of Florence Code orders section number-
... over us as we continue to work to make Florence greater. We are forever grateful to the mayor and others in Florence for their continued support of the Gouw family. The children, family, and closest friends of the Honorable Taff Gouw Jr. are working diligently to leave an active legacy. The B Civil Scholarship, which means courteous, innovative, viable, inspirational, and leadership, was founded on May 2021, and a recipient from his alma mater, Hannah Papico High School, Nate Gibbs High School, received the first award. As the committee members continue to work, a committee of his colleagues, family, and friends has been formed and are working to create a fundraiser that suited his personality and will be held his birthday weekend annually. The Legacy Gala in his memory will occur this year, August 12th. We, the committee, are requesting the city please sponsor a portion of this gala by helping us acquire the Florence Center and other things to have an epic event and raise money for the students of Florence Districts 1 and 2. A scholarship has also been set up at his home church, Mill Branch AME. Not only will we be honoring Judge Gouw, but we will be helping young people who deserve an opportunity to go to a college of their choosing. We pray that you will grant this request. I and the committee can be reached at 843-939-0018 or b-civil-scholarship@gmail.com.
Thank you, Mrs. Gouw. Now, I want to say Gouw's Robinson, I'm just gonna- Thank you. And at this time, our next appearance before council will be Mr. Don Strickland, Executive Director of PDRTA, to provide a transition update and to present an award. Mr. Strickland, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and staff. I'll wait on Mr. Kent for a moment. Thank y'all for allowing me to have a few minutes to share just a transit update on how well PDRTA is doing currently and some future plans that we have in place. Have a few slides here that I'd love to run through for you. You know, I've mentioned before, but we have an app at PDRTA that anyone can download on their Android or iPhone, and it's a live track of every vehicle we have in our fleet. So our call numbers and our dispatches have really gone down because now folks know exactly where the bus is. They don't have to call and say, "Where's my bus?" you know, every five or 10 minutes. So able to do that, which really helps out. We have a few things that's actually come to light in recent months, but PDRTA, our coverage area is 3,500 square miles. We cover six counties, and within that, PDRTA for many, many years was the largest RTA in the country. And currently, we're sitting third at 3,500 square miles in the country, so it's a pretty big service area. Obviously, we're not doing quite enough of the trips of the New York Transit or something like that, but it's actually a very large, large area that we're covering, and obviously in the heart of Florence, is a good percentage of what we do, but we are now back in all six counties throughout a service area, and so we're proud to finally be able to be back in each area that we're commissioned to serve. So a few things here, we, you know, we're offering, we recently had our task conference, Transit Southwest of South Carolina, and brought back many awards, but one of the biggest ones I'm proud of is the Transit Advocate, I mean, the Transit Provider of the Year. And so that's done at the state level, they look at all the RTAs and the progress that we've had, and that's really what kind of brings that back to light, is they, they see kind of the direction we're headed and the services they're providing. So we were nominated, we're actually nominated in 2018, 2020, and 2023. So it's going well there, and just it's good to know that they see it at the state level, kind of what we're doing on the local level here. A few things here, just up to this point, our fiscal year begins July 1 and ends June 30th, but through this point, we are 40,500 more trips than we were at the same time last year, so the services are growing. We're pretty much seeing anywhere from a 12, 10% to 15% growth each month, with an average of 12% this past month, which is phenomenal. February is normally a lower ridership month because of just the, you know, the number of days itself, but it was really up. So total 355,000 trips, over 26,000 of that downtown shuttle that runs free, we have two buses that cover the downtown area, and that covers McLeod and Hope Health and Adult Education and Mercy Medicine for medical purposes and ants moving around the downtown area. Over 160,000 trips to and from workplace, and I'll talk about it a little bit more in a future slide, but over 24,000 Housing Authority trips here in Florence, over 20,000 passenger trips to FMU, Florence Island Tech, and Adult Education, and 95,000 trips by senior citizens within our coverage area. And then just in Florence County, along, over 10,000 US veteran passenger trips this past year. So numbers are really increasing, and I enjoy being able to break those down to kind of see who the demographic is, who's using the bus throughout, throughout our area. Just a service update, there's quite a few things on the table now for potential, for kind of where we're headed, but that Teminsville service, we're working with Teminsville itself, Hope Health, Honda, and we do plan to roll that out later this spring, early summer. That will provide service in and around Teminsville with connections to Honda for workforce and then also connections to Florence, anyone need to get to Florence for whatever purpose, they would have that option. So that's, that's going to be rolled out pretty soon. Working with MUSE and also Hope Health again, Williamsburg County Transit, and a few other folks, but we're looking at the connection between Lake City, Cades area, MUSE go to New Hospital, out in Black River and Cades and building nowhere, and folks need access to and from, so that's part of our goal, is to be able to provide that access to and from. We know that without that also, there'll be a workforce component because we're passing places like McCall Farms, and then there's also the new business center and new developments going on out there near IGA or W Flower, so we know there's possibility there for future expansion as well. And then we also are working with Reese Foods and Pepsi and Performance Foods out at 327 Business Center. They realize that there's a component there that will really increase their reach for employees, and they're struggling to keep employees, so retention and everything else. So we're on April 10th, starting new bus service out toward that 327 incubator for workforce development, and we have several companies already on board with more, more conversations coming in the next few weeks. Harbor Freight Tool is another industry that we're doing a lot with in Dillon, and that right now, it just covers all of Dillon County, so Lata, Lakeview, Hamer, Little Rock with connectivity for their employees, but they also see the need for expansion to other counties. So we do anticipate having connecting service from Florence and Marion and potentially even Marlborough County, where we have, you know, Mohawk closed and displaced quite a few employees, so there's some, some business there, but with that connectivity to Dillon County, we know that there's also going to be a lot of connectivity to Florence, so that works both ways, the industries in Florence area that are looking to recruit in the Dillon area for someone that may not have reliable transportation, they'll now be able to do that. And then, we do have an RFP for a van pool service, which is another program that's going to work well with the industry and workforce side of things, and so basically, we would be able to provide a van pool, the employer would provide an employee, they got to go through the entire background check and driver training, but they'd be able to drive a vehicle from a certain area, so if Florence industry is looking for to recruit out of a different county, there'd be, you know, employees would be able to drive that vehicle, and then PDRTA would actually offer a guaranteed ride home program. So if they get to work and you got, you know, seven or 10 people in a van and one of them has an emergency, we'd be able to send a separate van to go pick that employee up, take him to the, you know, wherever, whether it's the school, if a kid, you know, falls a purse or arm or something, we'd be able to provide service to go take them to pick up the family, and then whether it's back to the hospital or home, we'd be able to make that trip for them, and that's one thing that's going to be needed in order to convince someone to hop in a vehicle with 10 other people to get to and from work. Future development, there's a few things kind of in the works now, and something that we really need to move forward with is our restroom, public restrooms at our transit center here in Florence. That's been something ongoing. Right now, we have a porta potty sitting out, an ADA accessible one, but as you can imagine, with 500 to 750 people a day visiting the transit center, that we need to move in a little different direction from where we currently are. So looking forward to potentially having an updated lease agreement so that we can spend 80% federal funds in a restroom, bathroom upgrade at our transit center, and with that would also come a necessary for our drivers to have a break in amenities and different things for them too, so there's a lot of benefit associated with that. And then, one thing we're noticing, especially on two of our six routes here in Florence, is that we have to look for an increase in headway. Right now, we're running hour headways, and some of our buses, it's not 12 hours a day, but there's certain days where we have standing room only, and that's anywhere from 25 to 30 people in one given hour using our buses. Route 1 is one that covers the west side of town, your Magnolia Mall, Walmart, Florence Mall, that bus at times is completely packed, and then our Route 4 bus covers the south side of town, and that was in a similar fashion at certain times of the day. So increase in headway from one hour to 30 minutes will make a difference, but obviously there's some budget constraints there, but that's something we hope to do in this upcoming fiscal year. And then, we're getting a really big push from the workforce side to increase our hours past 6:00 PM to at least 8 or 9:00 PM. And a lot of those folks are second shift employees that are going to work and they're sometimes walking home, and that could be anywhere from 5 to 10 mile walk depending on where they're at. So we look forward to being able to extend those hours. And then, we're also, Flats is, the policy team and study team, we're working on an independent feasibility study, where we'll hire a contractor to come in to kind of look at some of these things, and we anticipate that rolling out this summer as well, to be able to make sure that our direction, we know what we think we want, but that we'll have some other folks that tell us, you know, what they recommend based on kind of what they're seeing from the outside looking in. This one is interesting, and it's going to change as we move forward, but currently today, I mentioned, you know, close to 400,000 trips a year, 44% of everyone stepping on the bus now, either going to or coming from work, so that number is growing and growing more each month. School-related is 18%, for medical, medical-related trips, 21%, and then our personal, you know, a lot of times that's just, you know, going to pay bills and grocery shopping and things, but that's 17% of everybody that steps on the bus. We do these surveys every year onboard our entire system, and what we found in this most recent survey was that 81% of the folks that's using the bus, they said they do not have access to a car. 90% say they do have access, then that's drilled down a little further to where we find that 68% say they have no access or no cars in their household. 20% say they have one car in their household, 7% say they have two, 5% say they have two or more, so a lot of times that's multiple people in a household, someone may be going to work early in the morning, taking the vehicle and leaving the other folks at the home with no way to get around, so that's kind of why, why we're here and why it's important to continue looking at factors like this. Our average age range, 40% of our folks are between the ages of 40 and 60, those are still in the working area, and then 28%, 28% is the 20 to 40. So if you look back at the workforce piece, being so large, 68% of our folks are between the ages of 20 and 60, and that are folks that are still in the workforce. 60 or 60 and older, the seniors, I mentioned earlier, about 100,000 trips, that's 27% of our passengers, and then 5% are less than 20. We do want to see that number continue to increase, some of that is educational purposes like tech and Francis Marion, but a lot of it can be, we have new service now connecting high school, middle school students to Barnes Street, and so that's, that program's going well, so we do anticipate that number to increase as we move forward. This is pictured by Transit Center, you know, quite a few people are moving in and around every hour down there, and that is our passenger waiting area. We have information on the walls there, drain machines, and a couple of televisions for informational purposes. And this is some of the fleet we provide. Again, thank you all for allowing me to come and present, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, I recognize this, Tom.
Well, I just want to thank you for the partnership we've had with the House of Hope. We work together and you provide transportation to all of our folks, and very excited about the new up-and-coming stop on Darlington Street that we're partnering to bring.
Beyond simply doing the job, you're a desire to try to extend the services, and as we know from economic development, workforce development, getting people and jobs together is a huge issue, and so we have a lot of people who are looking for quality work, where they make a good income, and then we have a lot of jobs that are out there that are in need of people, and what you do is bridge that gap, and that is something that we are just very grateful for, that PDRTA does it, and under your leadership is doing it so well, so congratulations and thank you. Thank you, sir.
Don, I want to say thank you, and also, on behalf of myself and Councilman Mini Smith-Jackson, we were part of the Flats committee with your presentation there. And with the partnership for Barnes Street, I do want to acknowledge that when I reached out to Don on behalf of the Mayor's Youth Initiative, it was a resounding yes that he would talk with Ms. Victoria Nash, and they got together and created a program. I want to special this knowledge that they created a path that would allow the young people to be able to use that path to get back and forth, to get to Barnes Street so they can have access to the community activities. I know one of the things we've said before that we need to have things for our young people to do, which is important, but it's also important for them to have a way to get to the activities. And when you look at the numbers you just presented about the households, some not having cars, or if they have them, they're working. And so thank you for working with the Mayor's Youth Initiative, along with the school district, and creating that process, so thank you so much for going above and beyond to make sure things occur for all citizens, but especially our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Mayor, if I may, I've got one more piece of business I would like to do. At our most recent Transit Association of South Carolina conference, there were several awards given out, and I have one to present today, if I may.
Sure.
It is for Board Member of the Year for Urban Service, and the award was given to Mr. George Bailey, sending a nomination and, you know, just from, from the feedback and, you know, kind of his work and dedication month after month, and not just showing up, but reaching out on Saturday evenings at 10 o'clock at night about a grant opportunity, things like that. I do value his commitment and his work, and certainly appreciate, you know, that guidance, so I want to present him with his plaque for Board Member of the Year for Urban Services for Transit.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, do you want to say something before we proceed?
Sure.
You are.
This is, this means a lot, it really, really does, because of the organization and what you represent and what your organization represents, and to be recognized, and, and there were, I think, a number of other people who also received awards, Scott. I don't know if you want to just tell everybody, not only did the PDRTA win the Transit Authority of the Year Award, and thank you for nominating, which I had no idea you were doing, by the way, but thank you, but there were a number of other individuals, I think, who also won awards?
Yes, sir, we actually, we want, because of our growth in the rural area, Ms. Hattie Burns from Chesapeake County was another Board Member of the Year, had Support Manager of the Year, Mr. Jack Pickett, Transportation Manager, and then we had the Make a Difference Award, it's our HR manager. So we brought home, you know, at one point I felt kind of weird going up there, but it was just a great conference, and along with Transit System of the Year, I was given the Transit Advocate of the Year, so I'm not sure what's going on at state level, but evidently we have them forward somehow.
Well deserved, I'm going to add, well deserved, sir.
Thank you so much, I appreciate all that you do. At this time, we will move forward, our ordinance is in position, our first one will be bill number 2022, that's 38, for a second reading. It's an ordinance annexing Zone Commercial General, three parcels located at 401, 409, and 411, technical highway identified as Florence County Tax Map Parcels, number 90109-01-02, 90109-01-03, and also portion 90108-05-001. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do we have a motion in the second? At this time, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose like sign, let it reflect that the bill have passed. Next, we have bill number 2023-06 for a second reading. It's an ordinance annexing Zone NC-6.3 Parcels located at 707 and 709, South Church Street, Florence County Tax Map Parcel Numbers, 90104-02-015, and 901-04-02-030. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Well, we have a motion to second the discussion. Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And oppose like sign. Now we'll enter our introduction of ordinance for our first readings. First, we will have bill number 2023-07 for a first reading. It's an ordinance to rezone a parcel located at Dexter Drive from Neighborhood Conservation-15 to Neighborhood Conservation-6.1, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00150-01-14. Do we have, well, 140, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Should we have a discussion?
Motion, discussion.
So we have, we have a motion in a second. At this time, we are entering to any discussion so we can hear from Mr. Moore. And also, once we hear from Mr. Moore, we do have public participants. We have four who have signed up to discuss.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a request to rezonate from NC-15 to NC-6.1. The property is located along Dexter, Dexter Drive on the corner of Dexter and Atwood. On January 10th, Planning Commission held the public hearing for this rezoning. It was deferred at that meeting to receive additional information. This was mainly focused around the, its inclusion in the Kirkwood subdivision. We did receive clarification on that, it is not located within the subdivision of Kirkwood. And then on February 14th, we continued the matter and Planning Commission did vote four to one to recommend this. City water and sewer are available to the property. It's currently zoned NC-15. To the north is NC-4, which is very small lots. To the east is NC-6.3, which are multifamily units. And then the remaining properties are NC-15 that surround it. City staff, based upon its location and the adjacency to the various other zoning designations, we did recommend a 6.1 as opposed to the 6.3 that was being requested by the applicant. And we do want to denote that this project will require full stormwater review regardless of the rezoning being permitted or not. City staff will conduct that review internally and then send it off to DEHEC for their final approval and review and issuance of the permit. And then, again, Planning Commission did recommend this rezoning on a vote of four to one. And you also have, within your packets, information regarding various different Neighborhood Conservation zoning designations, showing the lot widths and lot area. And this concludes session one.
Any question? Ms. Protan.
Clint, a question for you. As I understand it, there's a number of neighbors who have come forward and spoken with you as well as expressed some concerns. We, I think we all received some emails with some letters. Was any conversation had where the developer would be willing to look at the NC-10 designation? As I understand it, the, some of the neighbors who presented had expressed that that would be something that they would be open to? Has the developer been presented with that? And would the developer be willing to consider that?
We did provide the developer with this information of all the possible zoning designations. The developer did want to continue to request the denser zoning designations. Through stormwater review, there may be property that's required to be set aside for ponds or some form of stormwater control to ensure that the post-development does not exceed the pre-development rates of the property. So they do want to continue with the request for a denser zoning.
Following up on that same point, did staff have any conversations with the developer about possibly deferring this matter and then, you know, preparing a stormwater plan for council to review? Since the ask is for us to change from the zoning request, zoning what it's currently zoned, asking us to change to a different designation, has conversation been held with the developer about the willingness to prepare that stormwater plan ahead of time so that we would have the benefit of not only the request for zoning change, but also to see the stormwater plan? Has that conversation been held?
Yes, I spoke with the developer last week regarding that matter. Due to the timeline and the original deferral and just the continued progress that we've made as far as the meetings, they have wished to continue on as submitted. The developer is present and can certainly be, will be presenting to council here in a moment and can certainly be.
But we don't, currently, we don't have that stormwater plan in front of us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
At this time, we recognize this Councilman Braddock following, Councilman Braddock, Councilman Romanee Smith Jackson.
Yeah, one of the biggest issues, Clint, as you know, is the stormwater, you know, issues in that area. We have quite a big project that we're looking on Malden and Brandon, I think, for stormwater. I've been out to the site, there was standing water there, you know, four days after a rain. Is it the city staff's? Do y'all feel like this will have an impact on that and potentially mitigate some of the work that we're looking to do right now?
So in this area, let me pull up a little map, show the flood plain. So the property, let me see if this shows up, located here, along this area, it is kind of the break of the grading through that area. So from essentially Malden West, all of that drains that way, and then northwest. And then this property along with this undeveloped property here and this kind of area, it all drains to this corridor through here, which is Billy Branch. So in Florence, there's always concern with stormwater. You know, we live in a very flat area. No matter where anyone develops, there's always, stormwater is certainly at the forefront of any review that we do. This is not within the flood plain currently. Regardless, though, city staff will do a thorough review of stormwater and make sure that, it's part of our requirement and passed down by the state, that the post-development rate, so once the properties have homes on it, driveways, everything like that, it will not exceed its current pre-development stormwater rate. So we will conduct that review and make sure that that occurs. As far as the stormwater project being proposed for Malden right now, we're very early on in that. I would not anticipate that this would in any way impact that. You know, as is, the property can be developed right now at its, you know, given the current zoning. You know, it is zoned for residential development, so.
And how many houses would fit on it now?
Right now, again, taking out, taking the stormwater component out of it, not knowing what improvements they'll have to make stormwater-wise, they could fit four lots on there right now based upon the lot widths. This is a kind of a deep lot, so the square footage requirements are not of that big of concern. It's more of the lot widths that are in question.
Councilwoman Minnie Smith Jackson.
Now, you said the developer was here?
He is.
Okay.
And he'll be speaking.
Yeah, then I reset my question.
Councilwoman Barnes?
My concern is, we say that a plan is, will be put in place to ensure that there won't be any further flooding. Well, I have pictures of the newest home in that area, when they get, when there is a substantial amount of rain, their yard completely floods. So my concern, if that is the newest property, and we are saying that when we add new property, we are putting in a plan to ensure situations won't get worse. This isn't, that home is the newest, newly built, and the backyard completely floods. My kids, my grandkids, well, I only have one granddaughter, but when she was younger would probably love it because it'd be a pool. But we want to make sure that we are ensuring that the property value of this community does not decrease because we are adding, while we need homes and we want homes in the community, we don't want to add. And so my concern is that new home that is flooding and more than the other ones, and it's the new home. So if we add other new homes, what problems will we have? So a study would be something that I would be interested in because I don't want to actually inflict that on them.
And with, especially with infill properties like this one, finished floor elevation, all of those components are things that city staff looks at to ensure that, one, that the newly constructed buildings do not have any issues moving forward, you know, once they are built. But also, they don't impose any added issues to what's currently existing. This area was developed prior to the current stormwater regulations. It was very common back then for roadways to be used as storage. So a lot of times you'll see localized roadway flooding in these roads within this area. And then, of course, that dissipates over time. But that was common practice. It is not now. But again, our requirements will be to, one, ensure the newly developed properties do not have any flooding occur on that property, but also do not impose any further issues on anyone else.
Councilman Smith.
Like Councilman Braddock and Councilman Barnes, I actually spoke with the residents and visited the site. I think we all have the same concern of stormwater. But my other biggest concern would be, in the zoning that they have currently now, about how many homes can fit, again?
Removing stormwater out of the equation, they could currently fit four lots on that property.
And with the zoning that we're recommending, how many?
They could, approximately six to seven.
So in that stormwater plan, are they going to, of course, they have to get it engineered, correct?
That's right.
All right. That they're going to provide them their own?
Yes. All engineering is performed by the developer and who they hire.
Because I think my biggest concern is actually visiting that site three or four days after a rain as well. There was some significant flooding in the area. And I don't want to put our residents through that. We already have significant flooding in other areas. And I think at some point, we are going to have to, we're going to have to fix the problem. I don't think we can see to keep creating that problem, especially when you have a bigger project in that same housing development. So I would just say, if they are going to have to create a stormwater plan, I would love to see that plan, to be honest.
Protan.
Clint, one other, just to clarify, the current zoning is for, the minimum lot width is 100 foot, correct?
That's correct.
And the request is to, for us to change it to allow for more homes to go from 100 feet down to 60 feet?
That's correct.
And the in-between one, which I think the neighbors had said might be a good compromise, would be the 80-foot width. Is that correct?
That's correct. There is another zoning designation in between what Planning Commission recommended and what it is currently zoned.
And if it were to be the 80-foot width, how many homes would be able to fit on that?
They could probably fit one more, five, five to six lots.
Okay. And there would still need to be, the stormwater would still need to be addressed as well?
That's right. No matter, even if the property remains as, there will be a stormwater review conducted.
But if they went to the 80-foot width, which is the NC-10, correct?
That's right.
That would allow for one more home to be built?
I would believe so, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that complete any questions from the council? At this time, we are entering to our public engagement. And first, we would call for Yancy Stokes to come forward, please.
I just wanted to start. I'm trying to lighten this up a little bit. I'm the opening act. You know what that means when we all go to concerts, right? I'm the guy you go get concessions and go to the bathroom before the headline gets out. Normally, I don't get nervous when I'm speaking public, but my wife of 37 years is here. I'm gonna back up just a little bit. I can't see her. I still get tongue-tied when we're in the same room. So bear with me. As some of you guys had stated, you came out to the neighborhood and visited with us, and it was greatly appreciated. I want to talk to you as a homeowner in Kirkwood. I want to talk from the heart for a minute. My wife and I, when we were looking to make our final purchase, our forever home, we visited a lot of the neighborhoods here in Florence. We had houses in different neighborhoods in Florence. From 50-foot, 60-foot lots, and we just felt like we were right on top of the neighbors. We visited Kirkwood for many days and different times of the day, just to take a look at the neighborhood and get a feel for the neighborhood's characteristics. What we saw were families walking with dogs, elderly people like myself and the wife walking for exercise late in the afternoon, and neighbors taking pride in their landscaped yard. And we knew that was going to be our neighborhood. The other reason for buying in Kirkwood, again, was the 100-foot lots. For the first time, we could actually park beside the neighbors and leave at the same time without having to wait for one to open the door, so the other to open the door to back out of the driveway. So that was kind of nice. The property then on the corner of Dexter and Maynard, like you guys say, it's currently zoned for 100 feet. We're not asking for the law to be rewritten in a sense that it's going to add 100 houses over there. Just to set the record straight, at 100 foot is four houses. If you drop it to six, 6.1 is seven houses. 80 feet would be one more than what it's currently zoned for, which would be five. But more importantly, when you guys vote, you're setting precedent for that property right across from this property, which is, I believe, two and a half acres. If zoned at 6.1 and put seven houses on Dexter and Maynard, you would allow 14 houses to go on the two and a half acres across the street. I live on Malden. Thank you for the money that's been budgeted and approved for the stormwater. I can tell you, the first year I moved in there, I've got a picture of my daughter, who was 14 at the time, knee-deep in water in the front yard, out the street. So that's greatly appreciated. Please consider, when you vote, to go back and look at the analysis that was done. And I know everybody's saying, well, from Malden, it goes west, and from here, it goes south. It all backs up and goes everywhere. One side's not draining one way and it's good all the time, and the other side's not draining well. When it rains, and I mean rains hard for a period of time, it backs up everywhere. The new house that they were talking about is the back door of that 2.5 acres across the road from Dexter and Maynard. It's been there for less than a year, and the lady's got water probably eight inches in her backyard. So it's not draining where it's supposed to be draining according to what the gentleman showed on the map. When it backs up, it all backs up. What I'd like to do is ask you, before you vote, I want you to close your eyes and ask yourself, if I lived in Kirkwood, what would be my stance? How would I feel? How would I vote? I also want you to ask yourself whether it's next week, next month, next year, what if it's your neighborhood? it's your neighborhood? What would your stance be? How would you feel? And how would you vote? Thank you. You did that for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Richard Smith. And just as a reminder, we will ask each speaker to please limit all comments within five minutes. Thank you, Mr. Stokes, for speaking within that five minutes. So at this time, we have Mr. Richard Smith.
Thank you. That's a hard act to follow for that. I don't think he'd do any better than he has done. But I thank the council for, for those who did visit me on the job site. It meant a lot to me to take time out of your day to see what the issues and what's happening. Sometimes you can come up here, you explain something, what's happening, and you can't quite get it across. So that's what my wife says. I have a hard time getting things across. But I do have, right here, this first one, and I'm glad it's right side up. This is a newly built house. This is a rain approximately five weeks ago. They probably moved this house maybe six, seven months ago. This is what happens when we have a hard rain. The next video, next slide, please. I want to thank Martin Fox and Eddie Weaver, that's with the City Engineer Department. They helped develop a flow plan, a flow path of what the waters happened in the neighborhood. If you look at the only drive at the moment, if you look to the right of it, you see Rutherford Drive and then the YMCA lane. And then you'll see below the undeveloped Kirkwood Bay. You will see those arrows that are pointing down into the undeveloped property that Mr. Moore was speaking to earlier about. 1808 is the picture where the guy just built his house. That water's coming off the YMCA lane, and it's filtering into the Kirkwood Bay that's being potentially not right now for sale, but is up for sale. That water, in turn, you'll see where they have some ditches on the very bottom of the Kirkwood Bay, is leading down to the very bottom of Atwood and Dexter. That is, I guess, you might refer to as the southwest of that. That is the lowest point in the neighborhood. I do have a survey, and I'll show you that in just a minute. What's happening on YMCA Lane, you'll see the arrows that are coming down. All the water is coming down there to the very bottom of the Dexter and Atwood subdivision. All that water, then, when it fills into that ditch, it runs over into the parcel that we're referring to today about. That parcel is like a retention pond. It is holding water. What water doesn't bleed out of it is absorbed into the ground. What water doesn't lead out into Billy's Branch, which I've been educated, and I want to thank, once again, Eddie Weaver, Martin Fox, for educating me on this right here. Billy's Branch is the main artery that feeding water out of that very corner there. When that overfills, all that water fills into Ansley and Atwood, and comes all the way around the corner and floods that whole street. Well, the ditches that are running down Atwood, as at our last meeting back in January, we had, I think, maybe someone had asked Bob Weaver, which is very good, he still, what he does, he thought he made a comment, but he couldn't say, this is what's happening. I didn't design it, but what he was saying, that the ditches from Atwood to Urbish Street, that the water flow was also making it to Urbish Street at that point. It does not make it to that point. Somewhere about halfway on Atwood, you see the arrows, the water is coming back, right back down to the corner of Atwood and Dexter. Once again, you got another flood point, a water that's coming there. There are two spots on that parcel of land that we're talking about developing. And the reason why I'm opposing to change it is because of Billy's Branch. You'll see the dotted lines there at the corner of Atwood and also a little bit farther down with Dexter. There are two ditches. Can I see the next video, please? This is where I had a survey to go out there and give you the markings, the lowest point. As you'll see, the red line, that is the lowest point in that neighborhood, and there's another elevation up top where you can see it's a little bit higher. So the water is coming down to that point. That next one, please. I'm in the corner of Atwood, and you can see it at this point in time. This was taken last Friday, where I guess we've had somewhat of a dry spell. Next video, please, next. Here is Billy's Creek. This creek right here is at the corner of Atwood and Dexter. Water will go up. Next picture, please. Water, there's a ditch going up Atwood, and this is where the water does not go uphill unless it floods. And obviously, you know what flooding water does. It will finally recede up. But the main artery, next picture, please. This is the other side of Atwood on Dexter Drive, and there's not a ditch, and you've got some stormwater pipes there. There's one pipe that leads under the road right here, it goes back into the other parcel on the left, and the next picture, please. And here's the other part of Billy's Branch here. At this point, the day is dry at this moment, because we have not had any rainfall there yet. This is the next artery of Billy's Branch. It takes water out of the lowest point at Dexter and Atwood, the lowest point. I am against building extra houses. I do realize it is zoned there for 100. I am against increasing it for the simple reason that this whole piece of property is a retention pond for water. And the more houses that we put on it, the concrete, their roofs, takes away the absorption rate. And when we take away the absorption rate, we're taking away the flow of water also. So this is a tough decision for someone, when they're going to build on this property, not only where does this water go with Billy's Branch? That is the main question. I promise you, it's not a good issue.
Mr. Smith, thank you for your presentation. I'll ask that you start to bring it to a close at this time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Can I take a pause for these and get the students out of here so they can look at the rest?
Yeah, we should have moved it early, but we're getting them, because we got two, because then we can move.
Okay.
Next, we'll call forth Mr. John and Kathy Briston.
Yes, I'm John Briston. My wife Kathy and I live 620 Ansley, very close to the low point that was just described. We've been concerned about this drainage problem for the 20-some years we've lived in this area. In the last few months, we've conducted a number of investigations, walking through the area. We got in contact with Lucinda Hubs and Martin Fox, who work for the city. We met with Lucinda, Kathy's met with Martin Fox, and I think we saw what we, Kathy and I, called the mystery of the storm drains and ditches at the intersection of Ansley, Atwood, and Dexter. What do they do? Where does their water go? Well, Lucinda and Martin saw the mission, and we're very much grateful for their conscientious work and their objectivity in their studies. I don't have a nice slide, but I can, I think, help you conceptualize what's going on in terms of the movement of the water. From Dexter, moving south, the ditch on Dexter has stormwater. The abandoned road that also joins this area, it goes to the side of the wooded area. The water on that road, or along with ditches, moves from the west, again, towards the low area. There is a storm drain pipe under Ansley, coming from south, and then there are the two ditches along Atwood that flow from the east. So what we have is a convergence of water from the north, from the west, from the south, and from the east. This has been the drainage system for the last 20 years. This is the explanation of why there is so much flooding, even in relatively minor rainfall. The drainage system is not really draining the stormwater out of the neighborhood. It is concentrating the stormwater in this part of the neighborhood. It can create a pool of water that goes from the water tower along Dexter, all the way back to Malden, all the way down south to our home on the south side of Ansley, to our backyard, and up Atwood, as far as the rise in Atwood, there is an elevation in Atwood as you go to the east. But this pool of water sometimes gets four or five feet deep in our house, in front of our house and the road, and three feet deep in our front yard, two feet deep, in our garage, one foot deep. Pressure water collapsed our garage door. The water got into our cars. We lost both of our homeowners. Our neighbor down the road had the water into her crawl space. It got up into the floor of her kitchen, and the floor collapsed. So this flooding is a serious matter. One problem, I'm sure you're aware of, is the conflict of jurisdictions, because Dexter and Atwood are managed by the State Department of Transportation. The city handles Ansley. The city did install some storm pipes, very short stormpipe system, but it's there. But the solving of this problem is going to require, at least what I've seen, some negotiations between the Department of Transportation in Columbia and the City of Florence, and perhaps the builder who wants to build the houses. So this is a complex problem. I would recommend deferring this decision until these problems are fully understood by all parties concerned, including the State Department of Transportation. And in conclusion, I would like to thank Lucinda Hubs and Martin Fox for their solving of the mystery of the drain ditches and pipes. We now know the cause of the flooding. I hope that we can also work to solve, for all concerned parties, solve the problem so that it would benefit not only the residents, but also the people who are interested in real estate development. It would be a shame for them to build homes in this low-lying area, and particularly use slab construction close to the ground. It would be a shame to find that these homes are subject to flooding.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, the chair recognizes Pro Ten.
Mr. Briston, I have one final question for you, and I appreciate you and the other neighbors who met with me out at the site as well and shared some of these concerns on-site. Would it, you talked about the stormwater and coming up with a solution to the stormwater issue. If there were a stormwater plan that were to be presented, would that the neighbors and the neighborhood could review, would that be beneficial to see some form of plan that would be a solution, potentially, to address some of these things? Would that have been helpful to have had that here today before us?
Yes, I think what I saw, the work of Lucinda and Martin, was the preliminary to that sort of plan. Yes, I think that would be very helpful.
So if the developer were to present us today with a plan in conjunction with this zoning request, that would be helpful for you?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, thank you, Mr. Briston, for your comments. We would recognize Mr. Mata. Please go forward, please. Thank you.
Namaste and good afternoon to all of you. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Let me tell you about the two meetings, which we had, formal meetings. Mr. Moore has already discussed about it, and also about the technical thing, which we are going to take care of when we try to, when we are developing, about the stormwater and all the other things. So I would not like to waste time for those things that have been already discussed former, but I would like to bring some attention to you. Like Kirkwood subdivision is a very old division, right? Now, this flooding problem has been since years, and this problem, this kind of problem, let me tell you, are generally decided between HOA and the developer, and if needed, the city jumps in. Let me give an example about vintage place, one of the prestigious developments on Half Mile Road. They had got similar kind of problem. The HOA and, the HOA and the developer, they got together and solved the problem. They never said to someone else that, please don't develop. It is their problem. I don't understand. It's a problem, but for that, you cannot stop anybody else from developing. And again, Mr. Moore, the engineer, and the city engineers, they are all going to get together to make sure that there are no further problems regarding this. Second thing, like, it has come to notice that since last couple of years, this Kirkwood subdivision, they have not been complaining about flooding to the city. Suddenly, when I brought it, this problem started, I don't know what's the real reason, but people started complaining. The only complaints that were during the catastrophic events like Hurricane Off, and at that time only, those complaints have been addressed. So I don't know why this thing has come along. And one more thing I would like to say, that as we have discussed, about 6.1 zoning, in that, the, let me tell you, the width of the land is 420 feet, sorry, 450 feet. Now, if we make 6.1, that's 60-foot wide lots. We can make seven lots. So it's 76 of 42. We've got another 30-foot land extra from where? If needed, we can form a ditch. The one they are showing, which is passing through the land, it's an illegal thing someone has done. Someone has transpassed that property and created that ditch, which is illegal. I can say, we've got 30-foot extra space, land, actually, from where? If needed, when we create a storm plan, we can make it, make a ditch that goes on the backside at the retention pond. So I don't think so we are going to create any more problems. I'm trying to solve the problem as the way we can. Now, let me tell you one thing. Mr. Moore and his team, we have been working with them, trying to resolve this problem. Suddenly, why these things are coming up? Because I know Kirkwood subdivision is just next door, but why they are trying to pull anything on the Dexter Drive is a big question. Let me tell you an incident that happened after the meeting on 10th of January. On 10th of January, after that, let, I have to say the name, please bear in mind, on 6th of February, I received a call from one of my friends, Indian friends. He says, have you bought a land on Dexter Drive? I said, how do you come to know? He says, Mr. Richard is here, and he wants to talk about it. So I was really surprised why anybody would run in the Indian community to find me. He just questioned me, have you bought the land? I was surprised, like, why would someone ask me like that? Or it is in the contract? He knows I'm the owner. Then he asked me the second question. I know that the selling agent, the broker, is a part of Planning Commission. Did he promise me, promised you, that he's going to resort it from? I said, I was surprised. Why he wants to put an allegation on someone else?
And Mr. Mata, you're coming upon your time. I will ask that you bring it into your close at this time.
Let me tell you, there's just a little bit to tell you, because whatever the facts are there, I'm trying to tell them.
Yeah, I'll give you about two more minutes for bringing it to your close.
Yeah, thank you. So like, then he says, can you meet with personally? I was surprised. I said, okay, I'll meet you at the location. Then he started asking me about who's the contractor, have you given any contracts? I was surprised, like, why anybody will take so much interest? I was surprised, like, why anybody will take so much interest? And I think so someone is trying to surprise us, trying to make it something look ugly. But let me tell you, Mr. Moore, my engineer and everybody are trying to take care, the utmost care, and make sure that we don't create any further problems. I think so. That's what I would like to say. I've got many things to say, but I would rather like to stop it from you and I appreciate. Thank you for giving me your time.
Mr. Manta, please stay right here. We have council members who have some questions. Councilwoman E. Smith Jackson, do you still have a question?
Yes. What is the future use that you're doing with this property? Have you disclosed that yet?
We are going to build single-family homes.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Single-family homes.
Okay. Is it going to be a cluster of them? I mean, have you, what is, what is being done? I mean, we're doing four to five houses on this lot, seven houses. Is this like a community? Have you decided what, what are you doing with it?
At present, we haven't decide, but we are trying to get 60-foot wide lots, which is now, let me tell you, nowadays, that's the requirement in the general market. Being a realtor, I'm a realtor by profession. I'm licensed to work in South Carolina. I work with Cala Williams. So we know what, what the day-to-day demands are and I'm trying to fit in that thing.
Okay. Pro Ten.
First off, thank you for coming. We appreciate your time and being here. And obviously, this is something that's significant to you, but it's also means a lot to city council. And as I understand it, whether you purchased it, optioned it, whatever, I don't know what this has, that really is not relevant to me. What's relevant is that you're coming before us asking for a zoning change. So you acquired the property in some form or fashion, knowing the existing zoning, that it's 100-foot. And now you're coming before us, asking us to make a change to something that's less and more dense, that would put more homes into an area that has known flooding and stormwater issues. What seems like we would need, and I'll speak for myself, I would need, is I would like to see if you're asking us to do something for you. In other words, change the zoning requirements. It's when the planning is done and the UDO was created, there's a reason why these lots were zoned as 100-foot lot width. There's a reason why they were initially zoned that way. And so to ask us to come in now, after the fact, and to, after you've made your acquisition of the property and ask us to change it, I'm willing to consider that. But I would need to see, you say you'll work out something and come up with something, but we have nothing to look at today. There's no plan in front of us today, there's no stormwater plan, and as councilwoman asked, there's no housing plan that's presented on a plot, there's no planned urban development, there's no pub with everything laid out for us to lay eyes on in order to meet your request to make this change. Listen, if you were to have decided you're just going to build the four houses on the four lots as existing, you wouldn't be here today. And we, it wouldn't be a non-issue for us. The only reason it's an issue is because you're coming before us, asking us to make this change and to create more density. Well, with that request, there's a corresponding question about how do we address the stormwater? And unfortunately, we don't have the answer to that. And in my opinion, it would be irresponsible, I'll speak for myself, it would be irresponsible of me to vote yes to make this condensed change, to add more density, when I don't have the ability to look at, to speak to Mr. Moore and ask questions about how that stormwater plan is going to be implemented. What you're asking us to do is to approve the zoning change now and just say, we hope it'll all work out somehow, and we won't have the ability at a later time to come in and ask those questions. Our only chance to ask those questions is now. And in my opinion, for myself, it would be irresponsible to vote yes on this change without having the benefit of the stormwater plan. And I believe you might see some ability from the neighborhood to maybe endorse the plan. If there was a stormwater plan that was sufficient, that met everybody's concerns, maybe this would pass. But without the benefit of that today, I'm, I'll just speak for myself, I can't vote yes. I'm going to have to vote no. I hope you understand.
Let me, let me tell you, sir. I know these all things have high costing. And without getting anything clear, I cannot get the housing plan because I don't know whether I'm going to get the approval or not. Second thing, if needed, if the city engineers are ready to prepare the plan, if they're ready to hire someone who can really make it happen, I'm ready to, whatever the charges are there, I'm ready to pay for it to make it more even. So that everybody is, let me say, satisfied with whatever the, you know, the drawings are and whatever the action needs to be taken.
Again, sir, that conversation could have been held, those agreements could have been made prior to today. But where you are today is you have nothing for us. You don't have any stormwater plan, you don't have any agreement, but you have a request asking us to make this zoning change. And what I'm saying is, and I'm speaking for myself, all the council members can speak for themselves, but without a solution in hand, I'm not in a position to vote to make a change. Again, if it was already zoned that way in the 6.1 and it was 60-foot lots, well, you'd be going about your merry way, building those houses and doing whatever it was. But you're asking us to make this change. From my perspective, in my opinion, from me, I can't vote yes until I see that stormwater plan. I hope you understand.
At this time, the Chair's going to move forward. I'm going to recognize Councilman Chalkworth McColl, following Councilman Chalkworth McColl, Councilman Chipper Smith.
I forgot to ask to speak with us. But nonetheless, I think what, what we're struggling on council is we don't want to stifle growth, but at the same time, too, we do have to worry about the concerns of the community. I'm of the opinion, I think of most of council, I think we need to see more on behalf of the developer. So I'm going to try to present a, I'm going to make a motion up.
Chalkworth, before you amend, and since you're still in the public hearing, before you please let Councilman.
Okay, let me finish.
Yeah. Councilman Smith speak.
Okay.
Okay. So at this time, we've heard all council members, and I guess I'm the only one who has not spoken. So at this time, I do want to acknowledge that we did meet with the community members and we heard their concerns. We also took in consideration of the recommendations of zoning commission as well. As stated before, our primary spoke is always doing what's best for all communities. I know some say in your, no, we're one community, and that's the City of Florence. So at this time, receiving all the information that we receive, I will acknowledge, Councilman McColl, I believe you had a statement or?
Yes, sir. I want to amend my motion to, I'm doing it right, Jim. I want to table this ordinance until there's a proper stormwater plan in place, worth of considering.
I'll second that, remember.
It's the motion, probably second, that we table this ordinance until we have a stormwater?
Stormwater plan, yeah.
Stormwater plan?
Yeah.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Manta, as you've heard, the council has elected to defer this, so that will also give you some time to table it and give you some time to review the information. And I would like, first off, thank you for coming forth with us and know that whenever we receive a recommendation from our committees, we review them to evaluate, will those recommendations be completely met? But in the same token, as a businessperson, we respect all that you're going through to make this happen, and we do want to see development happen. But also, in the same time period, in a community in our city, we have to make sure when development comes, it's going to bring the communities up. That's our goal to uplift. So please do not give up, please continue to meet with our city staff and get those things in place so the next time you come forward, hopefully, we can say, we do.
Thank you very much. You brought a smile on my face. Thank you. You have given me some time because what I'm trying to do is lift the development, lift, you know, get some good houses, modern houses, make everybody happy. So you have been to the opening for our temple, the church.
I did.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I'm one of the committee members of that temple also.
That's right.
We are here to live happily and peacefully and live with the neighbors, make everybody happy, and I appreciate your time and you have given me some more time to work on it. I know it's going to cost me. I don't know whether it's going to pay me or not, but I'll work on it. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here today. At this time, council, we do have other ordinance. While we ask if there's no objection, because we do have members of the public here, especially our youth and our seniors, could we please move our ordinance, introduction of ordinance, introduction of resolutions forward at this time? If there's no objection, I would like you to do that.
Say.
Okay. Hearing no objections, we will move forward with our introductions of resolutions at this time. So our first resolution, and I'm going to make my mark, y'all, so I'll bring us back in the right place when we're completing.
Mayor, since they down to like number five, can we go ahead and put him up? Number one, number E.
Well, let me, we have a senior who is 90-something years old. So what we would do is that any of the resolutions that we have individuals present, we will move those individuals in that order, bring them forward. So first, we have resolution number 2023, that she was seven. It's a resolution of recognition of Mr. Henry Bryant by the City of Council. Do we have a motion?
Some.
Do we have, so we have a motion, it's second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At this time, we recognize Councilwoman Barnes to kind of give a brief synopsis of the resolution then present.
Yes, I am so honored to read this resolution for Mr. Henry Bryant, a resolution of recognition for Henry Bryant by Florence City Council. Whereas Mr. Bryant, Mr. Henry Bryant began working at Seaboard Coastline in 1947 and later became the first black foreman in 1966. And he joined Mount Zion AME Church in 1949 and served as a head cook for over 15 years and was a church treasurer over 16 years. And whereas Mr. Bryant served on the usher board in 1956, securing the position of president, which he held for 55 years. And whereas in 1965, Mr. Bryant joined the steward board and served as vice president 25 years before stepping down. Currently, Mr. Bryant is still serving as a steward. And whereas, Mr. Bryant served as president of the lay organization for five years and was also elected as the delegate for the General Conference four times. And whereas, Mr. Bryant is well-known in the community as a jack of all trades. As a skilled carpenter, he helped make improvements to the church and renovated several homes in our town, recognizing a need, he purchased four homes located on Bradford Street and remodeled them in his spare time. And whereas, Mr. Henry Bryant is known to be a compassionate, kind and loving man, possessing strong moral character and integrity. His positive influence on the community will continue to resonate for many years to come. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council and the City of Florence does hereby recognize Mr. Henry Bryant for his positive impact on the Florence community. Resolve this 13th day of March, approved by our attorney, Jim Peterson, our mayor, Teresa Meyer Ervins, and our clerk, Casey Moore. Mr. Bryant?
As, as Mr. Bryant is coming forth, I do want to acknowledge that he has his daughter line, daughter-in-law Dane Bryant with him, and also his son Tommy Bryant, and also Mitchell. So we're going to ask him to come forth.
First, I'd like to thank the City Council for recognizing me. Everybody has been a souvenir to me down through the years. I just, while I'm back celebrating my 90th birthday, and I also want to thank Ms. Brown and GPT News, you know, been right by my side, and I thank all of them very much. And thank you very much for this mission here.
All right. So let's fix it.
Turn it around, turn it around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was, I asked them, I was, also, I wanted you to speak as well. I want to acknowledge that, y'all can go to the podium here. I do want to acknowledge that when it comes to Mr. Bryant, his children, and also his daughter-in-law, a prime example of them, I had to honor people back into our community.
Thank you.
I would also like to say thank to you all, city councilmen, I know most all of you, my friends, very close friends, my son, my sister. I want to thank Ms. Brown again for the recognition that she's done over the past with my father being at gunpoint in his own neighborhood, had two young men to point a gun at him and take his money. It was threatening his life, and he found one of the men, and thanks the police department. I thought he was NCI when he came out, they were very professional and assuring us that he would, everything would be all right. I'm a business consultant in this Florence neighborhood, Bryant Carpet Service. My father, his intuition to help me to get started, I was 22-years-old when I started my business, and I still have done things for the city, for Bryant here and all, and I just want to say thank y'all so much for recognizing my father, my wife, my brother from the church. I just want to tell everyone, thank you, I love y'all, God bless you so much.
I want to thank my cousin, Teresa Meyer, the mayor of Florence, South Carolina, and all the council members. Mr. Bryant has been an inspiration in my life. He has been a father figure, a friend. If you need somebody to talk to, he's the one to talk to. He has a lot of wisdom, and when you have been around a long time, you know the way. He's an inspiration in the church. Everybody looks up to him and everybody loves him. Only thing I do is come in my line, AME Church, in the North Feds, the work you see, the panel done, Ms. Guy's room, and it, all about the church. You can see his work, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for what they have done for my father-in-law. I've been in this family for 47 years and he has been number one ever since and has not changed, not one day. So it's a blessing to still have a father-in-law for that long. Just thank everyone and God bless all of you.
Thank you. And Mr. Bryant, happy belated birthday. We pray that you have many, many more.
Yes.
I did want to recognize, when the incident happened, Mr. Bryant had an influx of community members and young people that came in and supported him. And so we thank the community for rallying behind this giant of a man, and we will, we'll look for even greater things, because you've still got more time to do some more work.
I'm not going to give up.
That's right.
I might give up, but I ain't going to give up.
All right.
You still cooking, you still driving. He's still cooking. He's still driving. He's still paying all his own bills.
That's a blessing.
All this stuff out, and that's amazing for him to be here.
Yes, that's a blessing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, the next ordinance which has participated here, should a resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eleven is a resolution of recognition for the Wilson High School Mock Trial Team. This, we, do we have a mo-, do we have a motion?
Yes, motion.
Second.
We have a motion, it's second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those are favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So I'm really excited about this, uh, resolution, because this was something I got to witness firsthand. Um, a resolution for recognition for the Wilson High School Mock Team, Mock Trial Team. The Wilson High School Mock Trial Team is a hands-on practice conducted by the South Carolina Bar to educate students about the foundation of the American judicial system and the process of litigation. Um, basically, the Wilson High Mock Trial Team demonstrated a great performance while trying a mock criminal murder case at the, uh, high school mock trial regional competition, placing thirteenth in the state and earning them the designation as backup team for the state competition. Whereas, team members Celine Cochrane, DreShawn Jackson, and Ford Scott each won best attorneys awards, and Ryan Watkins and Rita each won best witness awards. And through teamwork and determination, the Wilson High School Mock Trial Team has achieved deserving nority and is a great source of pride for the entire Florence community. Not only did they really represent Wilson High School, they represented the city of Florence with pride, class, and professionalism. And I was so proud. They should have been first, but you know, hey, and I could be a little biased, but, um, I, I, Ms. Laura Ann, you are awesome. She held the team down, kept them together. Um, and those are a lot of students, but you know, she maintained, did her best. And, and Ms. Laura, thank you so much. You are awesome. Um, and I would like to really present this resolution.
I would ask, I would ask all participants for this resolution, please come forward. And you can align in front of these, please come forward.
And these are future attorneys. Aunt Chiqua, I know you, uh, came in and you spoke with, uh, the mock trial team. You spoke with them in the beginning? And this means, uh, so much to me, because I know Wilson is always being, um, honored for their athletics, but they also have a good academics program that needs to be honored and recognized as well. So I am so honored to recognize you, Ms. Laura Ann, this resolution for the mock trial team.
Councilwoman, you can come with her, so you can hold that with her, so that...
Yes.
All right.
And let's not forget, they have parents.
Do you care, if you care to speak, you're welcome to take them over here to speak.
Thank you so much for this recognition, and I just want to reiterate the hard work of these students. Um, it is a tremendous amount of work to pull a case together. And these are, many of our students go on to collegiate mock trial and go to law school. And hopefully, one day, we'll be back here in Florence, um, serving in our local bar association and hopefully, sitting in one of these seats. So, um, thank you to the students for their hard work, and I just look forward to seeing how y'all will take the skills that you've learned from mock trial and carry them forward to serve your communities.
Sure, recognize this program.
I have just one quick comment. First off, congratulations to the whole team. You guys are amazing. And I served as, uh, an attorney coach for a elementary, middle school, uh, try, mock trial team, um, previously went through the bar. And one of the things I know is how hard the students work. But I also know it would never happen without the teacher, who does unbelievable amount of work to make it happen. So congratulations to you as well.
There's no other, um, comment for council? Thank you for your great leadership, as would all teachers. You serve so dedic-, so you're dedicated and you go above and beyond. So thank you. And to the young people, keep up the good word and continue to represent not only your families, but also your community. Thank y'all for what y'all have done. Congratulations. At this time, we will come back to our, um, I believe it was all the resolutions of individuals who was present, correct?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we will proceed with our agenda as outlined. We will resume positioning of introduction of ordinance, and we'll give them a few minutes as they're being able to depart here. So at this time, we will proceed with bill number twenty twenty-three dash zero eight for first reading. It's an ordinance to rezone four hundred East Pine Street from Plan Development PDD dash C to Activity Center AC, as identified as Florence County tax map numbers nine zero one zero three dash one one dash zero two two and nine zero one zero three dash one one dash zero two five. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do you have a motion in the second? At this time, we hear from Mr. Moore while I get my voice back.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, again, this is a request by the housing authority to rezone, uh, their previous administrative, uh, location from Plan Development to Activity Center. Uh, this is in a, uh, a need to, uh, redevelop that property. And, uh, right now, they are proposing approximately sixty-four town home style, um, uh, affordable housing to be developed on that property. Uh, so prior, the plan development was, um, this is the location map. Plan development was passed by City Council back in nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, through the years, um, that plan development has been lost. And, uh, we, we contacted, obviously contacted the housing authority along with Florence County. Uh, there was no record of that. So, uh, given, uh, the requirements of a plan development, uh, for any changes that occur greater than ten percent, uh, has to go back before, uh, City Council. So in recommendation by city staff, we wanted to zone the, the property accordingly with our new unified development ordinance and to fit their future plans, Activity Center was the best fit for that redevelopment. Uh, so again, uh, this property is approximately seven point two four acres. Um, it will, uh, be redeveloped as a town home style affordable housing. Uh, the properties or the structures located in the northeast corner of the property, uh, they are to remain. So the only areas that are going, uh, going to be redeveloped is the administrative office area along with this open space area and where they used to use it for lay down and material storage and that type of thing. The adjacent land uses are a mixture of single-family residential, commercial, and public assembly. So this is a, a very mixed-use area as far as zoning designations. And Activity Center does fit within this area. And this concludes Stash Report.
Do we have any questions here? And Mr. Moore, I just want to verify, now I know with that particular property there, in the front part, there was some drainage issues related to some piping, correct?
That's correct. So, uh, I will go back to the map. There is a, uh, significant drainage ditch that runs along this property line essentially. That area, uh, will be, again, as part of, as a part of their redevelopment. There we surveyed, were all of these stormwater components similar to, uh, any redevelopment of a property of this size? So, uh, anything greater than an acre requires, uh, thorough stormwater plan. Uh, again, they can, they cannot exceed the pre-development rates after they redevelop this property. Uh, so at, at that time, we will work with the owner and developer to, uh, work on a solution for, for all stormwater matters.
Have we seen any plans for the development of the townhomes?
Uh, we have, uh, we have, we have seen, uh, some preliminary plans. Nothing has been, uh, provided to city staff at this time.
I know that that is one of the catalytic area for design. Do we have any design factors? How that's gonna fit into the homes in area?
Uh, there will, there will not be any design requirements, uh, as part of that. The, uh, although this does fall within the neighborhood revitalization area, we do not have any, uh, as far as facade or, or material requirements. We do not have anything that, that nature. But Activity Center, uh, the setbacks and requirements that are outlined within that zoning designation do match up with what, uh, we recommend within our catalyst area.
Okay. But we don't have anything to show how that, just like we just talked with Dexter. We don't have anything to show what is gonna, we don't have anything to show? Or do we have anything from that they can present to us?
We do have a representative here. I know that they have some preliminary plans.
All right. If you've got preliminaries, would you please come forward and state your name and present affirmation, please. Councilwoman, did you have a question?
Yeah, while he, while he's coming, is this area a low-line area and does this area have problems with flooding?
Historically, uh, I don't believe there has, has been any intrusion to any, uh, typically, we associate it with damage to structure or property or anything of that nature. To my knowledge, certainly refer to Jerry Dudley, if he's aware of any, uh, but I, I'm not aware of any.
Gotcha. And I, I want to be sure now, um, city, uh, city manager in Clifford, there is an issue with a large pipe or something at that site that's got to be addressed? I see here our city manager, correct me if I'm, isn't there an issue with a piping or something at that site? Scotty, could you please come forward?
Yes, ma'am. Years past, we've spoken with the housing authority and they've asked the city for some assistance. Uh, there is a large, uh, stormwater pipe that runs through the property. Uh, and they had some issues with that pipe in the past.
Okay. But that's the pipe that I believe during the course of this discussion, that they say when they revell-, redevelop that site, that they are going to address, correct?
In this case, yes, they would have to, although they have asked the city for assistance. Uh, we did not, uh, help them with that. So I don't know if they've ever worked on that pipe. Uh, but I do think that there is an issue with some, some drainage in that, that area. And there's some depression in, in a portion of the property.
Okay. All right. Um, did you have a question, Councilwoman?
I did. And that will be something that the developer will address once they start going through this, right? The piping situation?
Correct.
Okay. Yes. Could you please give us your name and?
Good afternoon. My name is Esperon Huttons. I'm the director of facilities management for the Housing Authority of Florence. Um, thank you for your time. Uh, the, the drain in which you are talking about, it was, it is in conversation with the developer. Developer is well aware that we have a drainage issue going through that property there. And from day one, we had let him know all the issues that we, um, experienced with that drain is washed out. So evidently, the tile is leaking there. Um, he understands that if we get approval to develop this property, that's gonna be one of the first things. The infrastructure have to be, um, corrected before we be able to construct these sixty-four family unit apartments. Um, he's well aware of that, and if we are able to build, it will be taken care of. However, I do have a, something quick that you all can look at of the sixty-four units that's gonna be proposed to, uh, be built there.
And along that same question, I know it's been some discussion among your, um, board that you do want to look toward home ownership for the clients in order to get them moved out of these long-term rentals to home ownership. Will this project in any way address home ownership for your clients who have been with you, especially for years?
I, I'm unable to answer that question for you, but I do, I will, um, I think I could say that there is talk of the home ownership program. Um, it doesn't have anything to do with this particular property here. However, there are some, um, individuals in other departments that's gonna be spearheading this, uh, information that you're speaking about.
Okay. So this project will be for rentals, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Speaking from Councilman Ray.
Well, I, I just, in, in staying, maintaining some consistency, it appears to me that, you know, both of these situations are put in the cart before the horse. It's been my, my personal experience that a drawing or, or something of that nature has been presented prior to, well, you know, pictures, but prior to us, you know, sitting here, you know, for us to review. And, um, I'd just like to see it where we know what we're voting on before we're voting on it. Plus, we have a huge opportunity in this neighborhood to increase home ownership. You know, so seven acres, this seven acres in this neighborhood is really gonna be a benchmark for the direction that this neighborhood shifts to. And so to see a plan, um, involving home ownership versus rentals, um, i- is something that I'd like to have considered as well.
Do we have any other questions, statements at this time? Thank you so much, Mr. Huggins, for your, um, coming forth on such short notice and giving those answers, but we appreciate it.
Well, I, I do have a question. Isn't that the same thing we got when?
Yeah, we saw this already. We saw this already.
She came to the developer and...
This was, the difference is though, she came forth to present a long-term plan, which was, this was in with a rotinity looking at that. So still yet coming back, it needs to be given to us, so we're know specifically. Because this is what, now it's my understanding, I'm not sure. Has your board already voted and approved?
The board has, from my understanding, the board, I wasn't privy to this meeting, but my understanding, the board has approved us to develop this site. However, it was, it has to go through the proper challenge of the City of Florence before we move forward.
All right. Thank you.
Just so that I'm clear, as far as this site is concerned and its current zoning versus the, the future zoning that we're looking to change, are the guidelines basically the same in terms of what, um, is required for, uh, development, whether it was the AC development or this new development? In either event, is it requiring that the same studies be done, that the same work be done, that the same everything is done? Is that basically, uh, consistent from one zoning to another in terms of what's required?
That's correct. Any, uh, so stormwater review, land disturbance is, uh, completely separate from the zoning of the property. Uh, it does not, uh, take into any consideration the zoning. We solely look at land disturbance, impervious surface, uh, the stormwater runoff that's gonna occur with that property. So, uh, it, it applies to all zoning designations.
And so that, my question, and make sure that I'm clear, is that while there's a, a request for a change in the designation, it's not a change in terms of what's required. We're not relaxing standards of what would be required, um, of the developer.
That's correct. We're not relaxed.
Okay.
Right now, uh, the, the issue is we currently do not have any development standards for this plan development. Uh, we have absolutely no information. So in order for the property owner to do anything with the property, for that matter, will require either the adoption of a new, uh, plan development, uh, which would, uh, require the creation of all those development standards, or rezoning it to a more proper zoning designation that falls within our zoning code.
And that's what's being asked of us, is this proper zoning designation?
That's correct. So as is, uh, unless there is just a redevelopment, reuse of the existing buildings, uh, the applicant could not do anything with the property.
Now, I want to be clear though, for, we actually have buildings on the properties already that the housing authority has been using for administrative-type work.
That's right.
And also, what reflecting here is that there was supposed to have been a plan development, um, in place that we can not be identified through the organizations, so we don't have one.
That's right.
So what we're looking now is to place one on there, because there hasn't been one that we can legally define other than use for, um, the building for business. So what we are doing, being asked, is to really put a zoning on a site that's located in a catalytic area that's along Pine Street, that is designer focused upon the use for home development. So we are introducing something that will affect... So we are introducing something that will affect that community. And I agree with you, Councilman, just like we just looked and said to the other group, we need to see something. I think we need to see something, not just something up in the air and also with the drainage issue caused. That's why I wanted to bring up by that drainage problem because there was issues there. And it's a substantial amount of money, I know, that's going to that. So, but at this time, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or any other?
If not, I have one, one other question.
Sure. Okay, I think we have two. We can have the pro temp and then Councilman Smith.
If we were to defer this and give you more time to go back and to talk and see what, is there anything else that could be presented to us?
I'm pretty sure, I'm sure it is, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is there any specifics that you would want?
Well, there seem to be some questions raised and so that's why I was asking.
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am. I'm sure. Just provide me whatever needs to be presented and I'm sure that I can give it to the developer and we'll come back to the table.
Thank you. I think one of the issues we heard, there's something to show how you're going to address that drainage issues on that site, which we know is historical issue as well. Also, you did have some sketches there with the layout, but also addressed with your board that I know they're moving and thinking about doing homeownership.
Yes.
Will there be any combination of rentals of potential homeowners, single family in this mixed use, could be a mixed use development? So homeownership and also rental. So if the board has anything to that plan, would be great to have that. And so at this time, how do we proceed, Council? Would y'all want to do a deferral or what is, will this council?
Make a motion to table it?
Well, table is different than defer. Defer just puts it to the next month.
Okay, well, defer. Y'all think he'll have it by next month?
Madam, I make a motion to defer it.
Can we have a motion to defer? And we have a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of deferring this item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Thank you, Mr. Huggins. Thank you so much and thank you for your patience. Y'all, this meeting is running kind of long. I think my voice is trying to leave it. Next, we have bill number 2023-09 for first reading. It's an ordinance annexing zone light industrial IL, the property located at 1100 South Church Street, identified as Florence County text map number 00149-01-05. Do we have a motion?
I want to make a motion to discuss. Do we know what's, what's the plan?
Well, yeah, we do a motion and a second. They'll give him the opportunity to. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
And do we have a second? So we have a motion and a second at this time we were here from Mr. Moore, refs to this property.
Thank you, mayors and members of council. This is the property that is commonly known as the pet property. This property was gifted to the city in December of this previous year. And as part of that gift and now ownership of the property, we would wish to annex that property into city limits and zone it light industrial.
Questions? Councilwoman Smith?
Good answer.
What is the intent or future use of that apartment?
The only intent, the only planned intent for it at this time is for us to seek grants in order to clean up the facility. The facility is exposed to or has been exposed to a brownfield type situation from the neighboring.
Unified.
Dry cleaners, thank you. And that plume flows into this piece of property. So currently, in order for us to, to get it, we have worked through and grant to conduct some preliminary investigations into it, which will then hopefully qualify us for brownfield grants in order to clean up the site. But there's, there is no future plan until we can determine when and how we can effectively clean up the site.
Also, city manager, once the site has been cleaned up because of other issues, what could be the potential use for the sites?
Well, we, we don't know exactly what our limitations will be. That will be part of the study. But we do know that it'll be limited. There are probably not the ability to do housing or residential units there. But until the, until the, the site is further evaluated, we really don't know what those restrictions will be. At some point, we'll have to come back to you with that information.
And then a question or discussion from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Please let the referee reflect. This bill has passed first reading. Next for first reading is bill number 2023-10 for first reading. It's an ordinance to correct clerical errors made in the assignment of zoning designation during the adoption of the unified development ordinance by correcting the city of Florence zoning atlas. Do we have a motion?
Turn to the room.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. At this time, we're here for Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, this is an ordinance to correct clerical issues that occurred during the assignment of zoning designations when we adopted the unified development ordinance and zoning maps. These properties are located primarily along the Greg Avenue corridor and it's approximately 18 different properties. We have sent letters to all of the property owners, make them aware of this issue and our taking it back to city council to correct. Most of the properties were previously zoned R5. There, most of those are multifamily properties along with R2. And so this is similar to the ordinance that we passed a number of months ago correcting some of the, the transfers that occurred whenever we adopted the new zoning map.
Mayor, can I ask for a ten?
If I understand correctly, that it got, all of these properties got incorrectly designated as commercial general?
That's correct. Yes, this.
From residential what they were to commercial?
That's right. It was previously being residential use somehow unusually. What, how that often occurs is it's based upon our GIS looking primarily just at the dimensions of the property and kind of the complete area. And while city staff or consultants and multiple folks reviewed these, obviously errors do occur. This was brought up during a sale of one of the properties that occurred along that, that corridor and some issues that got brought up. They are purchasing the property for single-family use and obviously being commercial general. Some of the, the lender, when they were doing their research discovered that. So that's what brought this to city staff's attention.
It's just a cleanup, though?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Thank you for that portion. At this time, we will move forward for our introduction of resolution. We've already addressed first resolution, which was resolution at eight point. At this time, we are move forward resolution number 2023-08. It's a resolution instructing the city staff to issue notice to the housing authority commissioners that a hearing will be held before the city council of Florence to determine whether the members shall be removed as a commissioner for insufficiency, negligence of duty, or misconduct in office. What is your pleasure?
I'm making a motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Madam, ma'am, discussion, I'm going to accuse myself of this one.
Let the referee reflect that Councilman Smith will be recusing himself. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I make a motion that we discuss this in executive session.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. That this item be addressed in executive session and discussion?
Madam, ma'am, I would like to establish a evaluations committee for the remainder of the commissioners to evaluate them for the inefficiency, neglect of duty, and misconduct in office. For us to do evaluation questions, I will serve as the evaluation chair, Councilwoman Barnes.
Councilwoman, before we move forward with reading of commission, since we've got a motion over here to go into executive session.
Okay.
Let's, um, see how we can handle that. Okay, so in relation to that motion to go into executive session, is there any discussion in reference to that motion to go into executive session? Hearing none. All those in favor of taking this item up in executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, signify by, okay. So this item will be addressed in executive session. Next, we have resolution number 2023-09. It's a resolution to recognize March as Women History Month in the city of Florence. Do we have a motion?
Turn to the room.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let it reflect that the resolution has passed and the city will recognize Women History Month in the city of Florence. Next, we have a resolution number 2023-10, a resolution adopting the reclaiming our community initiative. Do we have a motion?
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. All right. We have already addressed resolution number 2023-11. Next, we have resolution number 2023-12 and resolution number 2023-13. 2023-12 reads, a resolution authorizing staff to negotiate a grant agreement with an applicant in compliance with the South Carolina Opium Recovery Act. Resolution number 2023-13, a resolution authorizes staff to negotiate a grant agreement with an applicant in compliance with the South Carolina Opium Recovery Act. Both these items, if there are no objection, can be taken up in, in executive session.
Madam, ma'am, I need to accuse myself of that. I've already signed the form.
All right, Councilman Bright will be recusing himself. If there's no objection, we will discuss both resolution in executive session. Next, we have report to council. First one is department to boards and commission. We're here for Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We have two boards that we have vacancies. The first board is our Memorial Stadium Board. We have one vacancy there. We do have an applicant, Mr. Robert Pridgen, that falls to Councilman McCall.
Councilman McCall, you've heard the statement. Do you have a position?
I'll let nominate Robert Pridgen.
It is a motion that Mr. Roger Pridgen be appointed to Memorial Stadium Commission. This is the motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mr. Robert Pridgen being appointed to Memorial Stadium Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let the record reflect that he has been appointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second board is our design review board. There is one vacancy. The applicant must be a commercial general contractor. We do have one applicant, Mr. Kyle Gunter, and he is a contractor. The appointment falls to Councilman Jabay.
I would nominate, make a motion to nominate Kyle Gunter.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let Mr. Gunner be appointed to the design review board. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Let the record reflect that Mr. Gunner has been appointed to the design review board.
That complete status report.
Thank you. Next, we will have a report from Mr. Clint Moore, Assistant City Manager of Development.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Did want to provide a quick update on downtown, specifically on Urban Square. At this time, we have signed the contracts with our parking deck contractor, which is Thompson Turner out of Sumter. We have also received funding from the developer to partner with him in the mass grading of the site to accommodate his development as well with the apartments. And then this while it started, we'll have our kickoff meeting with Thompson Turner on April 5th. Meet and discuss the process and items moving forward. And then I do anticipate that, that work to begin 40, 45 to 60 days after that kickoff meeting. So right now, they are getting their insurance and bonding and everything put in place to, to start the project. So we're obviously all very excited about that. We've had tremendous amount of delay due to COVID and various other items. And so we're looking forward to starting that project.
Right, thank you for that update. And at this time, we proceed in our agenda, a meritoria report. First, I do want to say that I want to acknowledge that myself and our city manager and deputy city manager went to Washington this past month and we did meet with our federally elected officials. We met with First Congressman Frye and we spoke with him. And he did also come here this past Monday to the city of Florence. Also, we met with Senator Tim Scott and also Senator Missy Graham. We met with them and discussed some of the needs of the cities, special funding and association with our water treatments plant as well as also some of our stormwater issues. That meeting was, it was a good meeting and we're, hopefully, we'll hear some things from their staff and mother. And as you know, with Washington, there's a budgeting process that we have to go through in order to get that. So maybe we can get some funds to help with that as well. And also, just to update you, that we've, I've had opportunity to sit in on several of our different committees. You heard a report from Mr. Schricklin in reference to the flats committee. There are some various fundings that will address items more on the county level here when it comes to our roads and things like this. And at this time, what I would also like to do is acknowledge one of the individuals who had went to Washington with us. I'm not sure if y'all are aware, but our city manager has been serving with our city for the last 15 years. And the last two, close to two and a half, he served as our city manager. So I'm going to ask that Mr. Randy Osterman, please come forward.
No, he didn't know you.
Tell.
We would like to thank you for 15 years of service here with the city. I know you probably got most of your career to the last two and a half or whatever. But we want to thank you and congratulations on 15 one per year. All right, can you speak?
Let him jump into the fire, front fire. It's a bit of blazer and we'll see what we do for the rest of the next couple of years.
Thank you. And yes, so they caught him off guard. He was not aware that we would go ahead and give, acknowledge him at this time. But also on that same token, I do want to acknowledge that we're at that time of year that we have to review our city managers. So if there's no objection, what we will do, we will do that. I'm going to ask that Councilwoman Barnes and also Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson come forth with me so that we can collect all of our information. And Randy, we do plan to keep you another year, so I'm sorry. But otherwise, that is my update for you. Washington, we've worked there and we can continue to push to get information there. And also just want to congratulate our city manager. So at this time, we will move forward with our committee reports. And at this time, we have a report from the chair from the Business and Development Committee.
Thank you very much. Business Development Committee met February 16th and we had a very robust conversation about a number of different development items that were occurring inside the city. We looked at the comprehensive plan and I believe coming up at one of our next committee meetings we'll be taking a deep dive into what specifics within that comprehensive plan are addressed by the Business Development Committee. And so we look forward to that update. We also got an update from the staff on the status of several projects. The Third Penn Capital Roads project, we got an update on that. We got an update on water and sewer utility projects, which is voluminous. We also got an update on stormwater utility projects as well as development projects. And one of the things that was exciting that happened recently is the Hope Health announcement of the Streeter Building rehab that's taking place. That occurred and. of the Schreder Building rehab that's taking place. That occurred, and the detail of what they're going to do, and that's, for those that don't know, that building, the Schreder Building is a historic building that is at the corner of Darlington and Dargon Streets, which is at the back corner of the Hope Health property. And they have acquired a significant amount of property up Dargon Street as well as along Darlington Street. And they're going to totally reconfigure that whole corner. And we already have the grocery store, the Save-A-Lot Grocery Store, that's right there on the opposite corner of Dargon and Darlington. And so to have this new development, which will have administrative offices as well as other aspects to it, is very exciting for our downtown, but as well as for the development of our, creating more office space for future use. So we're very excited about that. And thank you for the report on Urban Square and what's happening. We're really excited. Finally, after three years, I guess, two, three years, that, that project is going to be moving forward. So we have our next meeting now scheduled for March the twenty-third, and we look forward to additional updates at that time. Unless those other council committee members have anything to add, then that concludes our report.
Thank you for that report. And as when it comes to, I do want to share with the Schreder Building. That's a historical building as of last month, along with Hope Health and one of our board members who's out there. Ms. Barnes, thank you. She serves on the Hope Health board along with myself. We did gather with the family last month. The living family came forth, his great-granddaughters and great-granddaughters. They were here, and they, they're very pleased to have that. They actually gave us some photos of the, Mr. Schreder and his wife. At this point, it is planned and hoped that in January, the family will be coming back again for a presentation opening for the Schreder Building. The plans at this time is the first floor would also be the house of program. And actually, Representative Terry Elzander, along with Dr. Keith, has been two of the main spearhead pushing for a program that would address men health, but especially African-American males. So for the gentleman, that's going to be something good for all the men to be at part, but also others will be included. The land around there, Hope Health has obtained all of the land, sell for the cleaners on the corner, which has some, you know, is a cleaner. So we're not going to really focus too much there. But if you get a chance to go to Hope Health site, there will be a walking trail that will be encompassed out there along with green space. So we're hoping to have that ready for the public in January. So for the business committee, thank y'all for that update. We truly do appreciate that. And the Schreder family, more than likely, y'all will be back again in January. And when that date comes forward, I'll try to remember to let you know in advance when that occur. At this time, we will have a report from our Community Development Chair Committee, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Community Redevelopment Committee, I am the chairperson. Shaques McCall is a member, and Councilwoman Neesmith Jackson is also. We did not meet, however, we've got some really great news. Neighborhood Works CDC five oh one C three is finally approved. After about, I don't know how many months, close to a year, we finally got that. And this morning, we met with the, talking over the comp plan, and there's, they've already inputted some plans because they knew that we had this CDC on the way. So we are excited about that. But we also want to ask business owners and the community to invest in our CDC's efforts to improve our community. That concludes my, unless there's something else from the committee, that concludes, concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairwoman, for that report. And at this time, we will have a report from the chair from the Marketing and Public Relationship Committee.
Yes, we met on March ninth, was it, to kind of discuss annexation. Wanted to, I guess, establish more of moving towards a smart growth versus urban sprawl. We did some annexation, found out what all goes into annexation, what is considered, how we consider annexing, because we do want to close a lot of our donut holes that we have in the city. So how we can proactively and effectively address those. Also looking forward to, we talked about impact fees and, and getting consultants or finding out how we can start impact fees on development as we inherit these streets, these communities. And there is no collection of fees to maintain. So perhaps doing impact fees to maintain these communities that after developers gone and taking their money, we do inherit and have to keep maintaining. So we're looking into that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair, for that.
Unless anybody has anything, I'm sorry.
Chair recognizes the pro ten.
Are we still meeting on Wednesday?
I'm going to find out. I told Amanda today, I would definitely let her know today if we're going to meet on Wednesday. Okay?
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, for that. At this time, we're having a report from the chair from the Finance Audit and Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. We met on February twenty-second. We discussed the, and reviewed the city finances, or financials. In addition, we had an update regarding the city, the city's weatherization program and about how many homes we'd be able to weatherize with the funds available. And lastly, we did speak about, we spoke and discussed a robust discussion regarding the opioid settlement fund, funding for which we'll be discussing later on today. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. At this time, we're here, where we have Judicial Review Committee, and with this, it may be discussed in executive session unless there's any objections.
No objections.
Hearing none, we'll be covering the executive session. And at this time, we have executive session items, A, to receive legal advice on the removal of a member of the Housing Authority Board, thirty, dash, four, dash, seventy-eight, two. And then B, for a discussion related to a contractual matter, thirty, dash, four, dash, seventy-eight, two. And for a discussion related to a contractual matter, thirty, dash, four, dash, seventy-eight, two, and a personnel matter, thirty, dash, four, dash, seventy-eight. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
We have a motion and a second that we go take this item to executive session and discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now going to executive session.
We are returning from executive session.
Returning from executive session, at which time we, there was no vote, our, our action taken at that time. So we will go back to our agenda as outlined. We did have the following resolutions which were to be addressed. We had a motion on the floor for the reference to resolution number twenty, twenty-three, dash, zero, eight. It was a resolution instructing the city staff to issue notice to a housing authority commissioner that a hearing will be held before the city council of Florence to determine whether the member shall be removed as a commissioner for insufficiency, negligence of duty, or misconduct in office. Do we have a position on?
Mayor, ma, Madam Mayor, I, I'd like to amend the motion to insert a, in paragraph A, the date, March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, at ten, ten a.m.
Some move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Letting know that resolution number twenty, twenty-three, dash, zero, eight has passed with a date of the third, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, ten o'clock a.m.
Madam Mayor, you, your votes were intended to approve the amendment. Now you need your vote on the resolution as amended.
Okay. Now we'll do our resolution as amended with the date as stated. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for resolution number twenty, twenty-three, zero, eight, with an addition of the date of the third, thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, at ten o'clock a.m. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let it reflect that resolution number twenty, twenty-three, dash, zero, eight, as amended, has passed. Next. All right, our next resolutions, we have resolution number, third, number twenty, twenty-three, dash, twelve, a resolution to authorize the staff to issue, negotiate a grant agreement with an applicant in compliance with the South Carolina Opiate Recovery Act. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to have to recuse myself.
Let the record reflect that Councilman Braddock has recused himself. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. All right. And just so the public can know that this is, South Carolina Opiate Recovery Act is a fund that we are receiving from the state in order to address the issues associated with opioid recovery. And this is a grant that will be open for the next five years. And anyone who's provides services in relationship to opioid recovery, you're welcome to apply through the city of Florence and present information. You can contact our city staff, and they will gladly help you with that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed like sign. Resolution number twenty, twenty-three, dash, thirteen has been withdrawn, and I was motioned that we, we table resolution number twenty, twenty-three, dash, thirteen. I motion, do we have a second?
Second.
This is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, we had also, we received information from our Judicial Review Committee, and at which time, there was no vote and no action taken on that particular item. At this phase, I believe that completes our agenda. Do we have any other concerns, questions? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.